Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we are joined by Jessica and Julie on our team. Hello ladies. So good to see you. And we have a very special guest here today. We have Janelle from Simple Grace Collective. If you know and love Janelle, give her a shout out in the comments. In the chat, we love to hear from you. Where in the world are you? Do you have snow? Are you in Australia where you go to the beach at Christmas? Where are you in the world and how is it going? Julie's over here laughing because she's like, I'm in Florida. I go to the beach. We're really excited to have you guys here today. Janelle is here to share some really exciting information. If you have been under a rock and haven't checked your email, if you're here right now live, then you absolutely have checked your email. And that's why you're here and you're excited to hear what she has to say. Janelle has since October enrolled 75 customers. That is not re-activations of people who were customers before. Important to note. So we're going to be talking about that here today. If you guys know Janelle, you also know that a big part of how she runs her business is using Get Oiling. So if you use Get Oiling and you want to know how she managed to do this, then get your questions ready. We're going to be interviewing today. We're going to be chatting back and forth. Really excited to get into all of the details here today. So thank you for joining from Saratoga Springs in Peoria, Arizona, Nova Scotia, Canada. From Vienna, hello. We're so excited to have you here today. Do you guys have snow where you are? We woke up to a tiny bit today. You guys live in the tundra. You have snow, right?
Yeah, it's like negative 12 again. Cold.
Awful. I'm so sorry. Anchorage, Alaska is here. Yes. Negative two degrees cold. Yeah, well, that's um, alright. It's that time of year. Obviously, we don't have any Aussies tuning in at their midnight for this. They'd be like, yeah, guys, we go to the beach. Alright, I'm not even going to attempt that accent. Alright, let's get to this. So excited to chat with you here today. Janelle, first, for anybody who doesn't know you, can you give us a little bit of a background? You are obviously a Young Living brand partner. We'll talk a little bit about Simple Grace Collective as well here today, but let's hear your oily story. Okay, so I have- Share what you're oiling up in the comments, you guys. What are you oiling on today?
Yes, please do that. So I have been with Young Living since 2017, and I did not explore the business side of it for almost a full year. But when I did, I decided to just go in full throttle with it because I had at that point really learned to love the oils, the products, and all of that kind of stuff. And so from there, just shared with friends, family. The first person I signed up was my mom, and I really didn't even give her the option. I just said, you're signing up. You need to change out some of your products in your home. And then from there, we just built a really awesome business, ranked up pretty quickly. I think I hit silver within, I think it was eight months, and gold a year after that. And so it's been awesome. It's been fun. But if you're anything like me, we're entering a new season, and we have been for the last year and a half. There's been kind of this transition. And so what I did in the beginning of my business is not what I'm doing now. And it's okay to change and seasons change. And I might go back to the way I did, which was sharing in-person classes, things like that. But that's not where I'm at right now. Oh, also, I live in Western North Dakota. My husband and I run multiple businesses right here from our ranch. We are actually 13 miles from the Montana border, so we are way western North Dakota.
Wow. Okay, so alright, so we know the figure. We know the number, right? 75 new customers. Just so that we've got a little bit of background here, what would you say was like a personal best before?
Um, I think one month, I think my best had been like 15. And that was, you know, hosting a few classes that month and just having a really spectacular enrollment rate from that. I would say the average, probably three people a month is average. And that's fantastic and so good. Even one is amazing.
Yeah, and also for context, how much time do you spend on your Young Living business typically in a week?
Uh, in a week. Oh, that might be hard. I'm really bad at math, so I'd have to break it down by the day.
You don't have Sarah here today.
My girl, I told her she had to be here, just, you know, anyway. So a couple hours maybe max a day, and that's probably not even truthful. That's with interruptions because we have four kids and the littlest one is at home with me all the time. He's 20 months, I think, right now. So, yeah.
Alright, so you're not in hustle mode. You're not having tons of classes. You are really only able to devote a couple hours a day to this because obviously you're busy. I mean, you've got the 20-month-old, but that's not your only kid. Nope, you got others, right? And you guys have several businesses, right? You've got a lot going on. So I guess just let's hear a little bit about maybe what's changed for you. You know, because obviously, you know, with three a month, that's excellent. I think anybody here is happy for three a month and three new customers. But what created the shift for you that helped you to bring in the 75 new customers?
Yeah, so I don't even have to say this, but I'm going to 2020 in 2021 have been just a weird learning curve for all of us. For myself personally in 2020, and then in the beginning of 2021, I had to really take a hard look at what I was doing with Young Living and make the decision if I was going to continue the business side of it. Not to walk away from Young Living, not because I was mad at them or anything like that, but because I had to figure out how to go forward if I was going to go forward. And in a way, that was going to be honoring to my family and to myself and my time. And so I had to dig deep and figure out if there was a way to do that. And so Sarah, who is my partner, we're cross-team on Young Living. Her in Hawaii with the Dream 1000. She's amazing. I wish she was on here. She's a pretty little redhead. She's awesome. Anyway, we have Simple Grace Collective, and Sarah and I like to really bounce things off of each other. And we really came to the conclusion that we needed something that was going to be simple going forward. And so we began as Young Living was transitioning, the way people would enroll and things like that. We began to come up with a concept and actually just a free little momentum building thing. And we did it in Simple Grace Collective on Facebook. And from there, Sarah and I, yes, we were teaching it, but we were right there in the trenches with everybody who did it, learning how to refocus, learning how to change our mindsets and to share differently because that's what happened. And so from that, I was very inspired with Sarah to create an actual system to utilize because systems are time-saving. And if you have, if you're working another job, if you have kids, if you have people that are taking your time, you need to have systems in place and automations in place that I have created through Get Oiling, thank goodness, to make that momentum easy to continue on and do. You don't want to have to be every single person sending out your welcome email or sending out your, hey, here's my free Simple Start Guide, or whatever guide you may have, so.
That's amazing. So can we get like just a quick sort of snapshot of what that looks like for you, right? So you mentioned, you know, not sending out that, writing an email for every single person. What are some of the things, because I know there's a lot of folks here who are maybe not using Get Oiling yet or who are just getting started. What would you say from a very simple perspective are the most powerful things that you're doing using your system to give you that extra time to spend on getting these new enrollments?
New member onboarding, having that email campaign ready to go with the information that new customers need to have at their fingertips. And then if we're talking about leads, having a lead campaign, an email campaign or text campaign to get them into the prospect vault that I have so that they can begin to learn. And then even a get-to-know-me campaign that I utilize so that people can get to know who you are, so that they can go from prospective leads to actual customers. And they're time-saving because let's say they sign up for your free guide. Well, that automatically starts your email campaign so that they can get to know who you are, but then also open the door so you can learn who they are. So those are some things. But then, if we're going to talk about the business side of it, if on social media of where that all of this kind of blew up for me in the past three months is making sure that I have the things in place, that system I was talking about. And that has been super important for me to have the specific system for sharing with people.
Awesome. So that system for you looks like having a simple guide that you're offering on, say, like the homepage of a Good Oiling site or maybe a landing page that you could share if you don't have a custom homepage. An email campaign that engages them, lets them get to know you better, just for people who don't know you. And then opens up opportunities for you guys to actually talk one-on-one. Now, you guys have, and for those of you who know Simple Grace, Simple Grace, that's Janelle and Sarah, who's not with us here today. We miss her dearly. Hello, Sarah. We love you. So they actually have created some amazing resources, just like the ones we're talking about here today. Literally, the one that Janelle is talking about is one that they offer that you guys can get. You know, so how to ditch candles and that kind of thing. Hey, there, she's here. She's watching. Um, so, okay, so you have these resources. And then you also have an onboarding email sequence, right? So when somebody gets started, instead of writing a whole email to them, you're applying a campaign to that contact?
Correct. So when I actually download from my Young Living website, my CSV file for the month or however your timeframe that you set up, I take that and when I plug it into Get Oiling into the contact manager, I put a tag on it, that tag instantly adds them into that campaign and gets them into the vault that they need to be in and stuff like that.
I love it.
Systems. Systems save you time, guys. Systems are where it's at and Get Oiling can do that for you.
Yes, yes. And you guys create the tools for people to do it easily with like done-for-you stuff. So alright, I want to get to that in just a minute. Now, let's really, let's get to what everybody came here for today. Can you walk us through the system that you're using, right? Because the systems we're talking about right now are sort of like apply a tag, automations. There's stuff that's literally inside the techie bits inside of the Get Oiling system. But systems aren't just the things that plug into technology. It's also the process that you follow. So when you connect with somebody on social, for instance, which I assume is where you found most of these folks or they found you, you're connecting with them, and then there's a sequence of steps that follows. That's also a system that's not really a tech system, but it's a system that you follow. So you mentioned this is something that you guys actually taught in the Simple Grace Facebook group, right?
Yes, and we have a free download. It's called the convo flow. And it literally walks you through the process of it. So number one, like, we're not just people that are like, here's some amazing content. And the convo flow is free. Like, we're just giving it away. It's not a, you don't have to pay anything for it. But we're actually brand partners who are using it and seeing success. Like, this is things we created for ourselves and then thought, you know, Team Young Living needs to have this at their fingertips. So this is just basically going through it. Number one, you are going to lead with intrigue and keep them curious. And I did that in different ways, you know, getting into like the reels, which I'm not going to get into this time. But even just my posts, like just crafting them and creating them so that people are intrigued and they want to know more and placing them in it so they can see themselves in my post and think that maybe that could be them. They could have that success. They could have that success with their daughter if we're talking about hormonal issues, which was one of the posts that really blew up for me. And then from there, I'm getting into the DMs with them. You know, I said in the post that I have notes that I can send them on the topic. And all they had to do was either comment below that they wanted my notes or they could DM them for me. Now, I will tell you that I had so many people that never liked my post, never commented on it. If you would go look at that post, you'd be like, okay, she has like 25 likes on it and maybe like 15 comments. What happened is people who did not feel comfortable putting the like or the heart there, they actually still DM me because I gave them that option. And then when we got in there, I made it about them, not about myself at all. I took what they were, I asked them what they were needing, what they were hoping to solve. And then I asked them, because I'm all about permission-based marketing, may I send you my notes? I want them to feel like they are in control because they are and they have to really understand that. And so then I would send them these notes that I have. Now, for some of you, you know what the Prospect Vault is. It's something that Sarah and I created that has information in there for people on different topics. So your prospective customers, they can go in there and learn. But we took those, we put them into our websites on a webpage so that I can quickly take that link for whatever topic I'm talking about and send it to those people when they give me permission to send it to them. And then I follow up with them and give them the resources so that they can grab the products. It has been really crazy and really life-changing. The convo flow, you go download that because it's free, like I said, on our Simple Grace website. It's going to walk you through how to do that, and it has been life-changing for me. And then the follow-up, there are people who said they wanted products and they didn't do anything. So I waited a few days and then I came back and I was very simple in asking, is there any other questions I can help you with? I just want to make sure that I'm taking care of you completely. You guys, when you come from an authentic position, people respond to that. And that is what I have found in the success. Sorry, I just kind of went off a little bit.
No, that's totally good. That's totally good. So we're getting lots of great questions here. So the short answer, you guys, if you want like the full, okay, where do I go to get all of this? It's a two-pronged answer. And actually, I think going to their Facebook group, going to the Simple Grace Facebook group may be the quickest way to get all of it because the link to this download can be found on their website, which is simplegraceco.com. But in their Facebook group, you guys also have like all of the recordings of the lives that you did when you were actually doing this over the summer, right?
Yeah, going through the simple momentum, I highly recommend. Even that we're not actively going through it, there is so much good information. You have to make the shift. We are in a new season right now. And you can either balk at it and say, I don't want a part of this, or you can embrace it and realize that you can really flourish in this season. You have to change your mindset, and so there is some work with it. It's not like, oh, I'm going to go do this and read the stuff and then I'm good. No, you really have to take hard looks at the way you've done stuff before and say, am I committed to shifting the way that I've done things in the past?
Alright, so a question that is popping up and furiously popping up, it's not just one person, it's many. These people, where did you find them or where did they find you? Did you know them already? Were you on social? Did you have other contact information? So how did this generally come about in terms of the people themselves?
So I would say October and November, 100% were people that I have been friends with on social media. The bulk of them actually came from Facebook. The majority of them came from Facebook. There was a few on Instagram. But they're just people that have been sitting there watching me for how many years, have been friends with me, maybe only through social media, that that's our relationship. But something in the way that I crafted these posts, because that is a skill, but it's a skill that anybody can learn if you have the actual correct little pieces. And I know that Ashley would love to help all of you do that, to figure out how to do that. But you take that and you just, you're going to get them with this intrigue and keep them intrigued and want to know why this worked so well for you and to see them as a hero in their story that they can say yes to having that success also.
Yeah, definitely. So let's see. So these are people. And by the way, Janelle, could you pop your handle in the chat? If anybody wants to actually go and see what these posts look like, right? It is something that you have to practice, right? This is something that back years and years ago, when I was actively building online, it's exactly the same kind of thing I was doing, right? I'm not out there promoting product. I'm not even mentioning my product's name a lot of the time. But I'm talking about life and sometimes it gets woven in and people get curious, right? You leave just a little bit out. Everybody wonders what the thing is that's missing. Some people will say something in the actual comment section of a post, but more often than not, they're going to sneak over to the private messages and ask you questions. And that's your opening. And so this is where your conversation flow comes in, right?
Yep, yep. The convo flow, like I said, it takes you from your post on social media to the DMs and through that process and then through the follow-up. Another thing I want to say, when I talked about notes, I want to tell you that you do not have to have Simple Grace's things that I have been using because I didn't just use Simple Grace. I also used Life Steps app. They have so much free content in there that if you're talking about sleep, you could go type in sleep and find something that you want to send to those people or even about lavender, let's say. I thought we can't post links on Facebook regarding products. I want to make sure that I answer this one. You can post any kind of links that you want. But if you're going to post a link and hope that people click it and that on your social media that you want to not do that, in my opinion, you want to get them in the DMs. Gone is the time where you're like, hey, here's a kit. It's on sale. Or here's a kit, go buy it. Instead, you want to say, I have been so blown away because I've been using lavender every night and literally I hate the smell of lavender. But man, that thing is changing the way that my sleep patterns are, and I cannot believe it. I have some notes on why this is helping me. If anybody wants it, go grab it. You don't even have to mention lavender. You can keep that out of it if you want to. Get them in your DMs. That's where your connection is made. If you post just a link on your social media, chances are people are not going to click it.
There's a question here as well that actually I think opens up an interesting, like going back through the system, right? So you're on social, you're making posts, your posts are generating curiosity. People are coming to your DMs. You're using the conversation flow. When it comes time to actually, you know, ask for the sale, as it were, are you still in the DMs? Are you getting on to Zoom with them? Are you getting other kinds of contact information? What does that look like?
So I will tell you that for myself, I am really trying again to honor my family and our time and things like that. Hopping on a Zoom with people is not something that I am doing. It is a great route if you have the time to do it. What I'm doing is trying to answer every possible question that I can for them in the DMs. And then I have in my notes the very simple way that I can copy and paste. Okay, if you are ready to grab your product, or I think you're ready to, no, let's not do that. We want to say, I know you're ready to grab your product. I've answered all of your questions and I'm so excited for you to get started. Here is the easy process to do that, to grab your products. And I just copy and paste that because if you have something in place that you can grab and put over there, how simple is that? That's a system, keeping stuff in your notes that you can copy and paste. If you have something that's going, let's say viral, like when I was talking about the hormones that really in October really kicked up the notch for me enrolling people. Well, after a little bit, their questions seemed a lot the same. And I'm like, you know what, I can probably take the bulk of this information after I get them to tell me what they're exactly needing. And I can just copy and paste that and it saved me time.
That's amazing. So, yeah, absolutely. I think so. If you guys see clarification, please let us know in the chat. We're here for you. If you have any questions, let us know. So basically what it sounds like, and this, for what it's worth, you guys, if you're watching here today and maybe you're not using Get Oiling yet or you're not ready to start using more complicated systems or you really just need this to be as free an approach as possible, what Janelle's describing is something that can be a total shoestring strategy. The Life Steps app is free and has tons of this kind of content that she's talking about that you can copy, paste, put into a note on your computer or your phone or whatever and just pop that in. And then it sounds like what you're doing really, and this differs a little bit from my personal strategy that I used to use and what I often teach, which is, once you get to that point where it's time to really have a serious conversation about making a decision, I'm getting them onto the phone or Zoom. But what you're doing is you're actually, you're relying on volume of conversations that are kind of being carried out at the same time, right? Having as many of these conversations at once as possible in your DMs on social and then using as much of this leverage sort of copy-paste information to support the conversations that you're having. And then when it's time to actually enroll them and get them started, are you making a MYYL link? How are you walking them through enrollment?
Yeah, so some of them I did create a MYYL. You do not have to have that to make it work, but it is easier to have that. But then, if I've identified the products that they actually need, it's really simple for me to say, okay, here's your list that you wanted. Now just go to create your account and then you're just going to search and add these products into it. What I have found, I will tell you, is not everybody was ready. But what I did, and here is the thing, I asked them to go create an account with me. And then I used this time for follow-up with them to make sure that I am really serving them well in what they actually need. And so that is a really key piece for you guys to know that it's okay to ask them to go create an account. It costs them $0 to go create an account. And you have that next step. You've had people who are willing to go create an account, even if they didn't purchase, and then you take these next months and you figure out how to serve them the best. Now, one thing I wanted to say, and I forgot it. Young Living had these little sample packets. I think they're still on, they're still in there. You can get like five, there's five in each thing. It was $40. And so like $8 apiece and it had a couple samples of different things. Well, I'm going to go back through and those people that I really just couldn't figure out what they needed, I'm going to go ask them if they would like me to send out a sample kit after Christmas so that they can try some of the products and figure it out that way. And so I'm really excited. I'm going to create an email and a little webpage so that it can be automated when I do that.
Okay, so we're seeing a bunch of minds blown, including mine currently. So walk me through this. When somebody gets to the point where you want to offer something to them, you are sometimes, or maybe even often, first having them create an account before ever placing an order. I think there are folks who don't know that you can create an account without making a purchase?
Yes. And I love it because it takes away, when they're ready to purchase, the scary thought of navigating and going to sign up their account. It takes away that step. And so they're more likely to say, yeah, I'm ready. Okay, just search that product, add it to my cart. Great, perfect. You know, can do it that way. So absolutely, go have people create an account.
Yeah, alright, so I would like to, at some point, Linda Allen, I would like for you to just come out and co-host with me. You're brilliant. As a couple of amazing things that you've put in here and some good questions and follow-ups. Hello and thank you. So first, use text replacement for responses. You often find yourself saying to others and just edit aspects as needed. Total time saver. I don't know what that means, but I want to go find out. I know you can do it on your phone where like, you know, you short, like you type two things and it, you know, paste a whole bunch of stuff. I've no idea how to do that on the computer. I'm going to need to find out. Thank you for that suggestion. That's a really good idea. Alright, I think Colin's talked about it before. Maybe we can have Colin come t-shirt. Or maybe you can, Linda. Alright, so MYYL, she's explaining, for those of you who don't know, MYYL is something that Young Living offers, not in all markets. And I don't know that it's fully functional right now.
There's a lot of missing products, so they're not all there.
Okay, got you. But the main point, and oh my God, let's please don't ever lose sight of this, you guys. If you don't walk away from this conversation with anything else, get someone started with an account and tell them you don't need to purchase anything today. And now you've got a reason to follow up and the putting their name into a form and like setting up the account in the first place, that is like 50 to 60% of the emotional and mental effort that would keep someone from making a decision. Now you're just going to help them make an order with an account that they've already created. And maybe that's a month later. So what? That's amazing. Janelle, that's such a good idea. And I think Linda said one more thing. Okay, and let's tie this together with this. And then I think somebody would like to actually see like a walkthrough of like, okay, I met someone on social. Here's an example of how this happened all the way through to signing them up. Just to put that in your head. But Linda has a really great question here as well. What are you doing for automation to help those 75 customers move to subscribe to save?
Yeah, so number one, trying to fulfill and serve each need that they have. Now, I will say, this month has been a little bit crazier. October was 16 people, November was 18 people, and this month made up the difference between the 75. And so I have kind of just made sure that they've got the welcome or the get-to-know-me campaign started. But then from there, as I get into January, my plan is to go back to all of these people. And it's okay. I know I see some people popping up, talking about, well, you don't earn that commission on their first three months, like it starts when they create an account. What I'm here to say is if they're not ready, they're not ready. But at least taking that first little piece off, I feel very confident that that next month, that I am going to create that connection with them and serve them in the way that they need, and I'm going to enroll them. Are there going to be some that slip through? Absolutely. Are there going to be some that never order? Yes. But I'm going to take that risk and you have to decide, is that a risk that you're willing to take? And for me, I am willing to take that because I know that the fortune is in the follow-up and I'm going to do my due diligence with this. And if it means I sacrifice one month of those 25. and I'm going to do my due diligence with this. And if it means I sacrifice one month of those 25% commissions to serve them correctly and make them fall in love with Young Living, then I'm going to do it. And I, I feel like I kind of got off track a little bit. Did I answer what Linda asked? I don't even know.
Uh, I think, so her question, uh, is I think a little bit more geared toward what you're doing on the automation side. If anything, I know you mentioned an onboarding campaign, so there's, it's very likely in that, right?
Yes. So for those zero PVers, the people who create an account, they have two options. They can go over to my prospect vault. It's called natural living. Let's dig in. Like that's what it's named. It's not Young Living information. It's whatever. It's natural living. Let's dig in. So they can go there and they can learn. And since Young Living, or since Get Oiling has created this beautiful app now, it's going to be so much easier to get those people to download the app and get into our little prospect vault that we have. So they have that option to go learn over there. The, the second thing that they have is I am going to be offering them these little sample kits. It doesn't even have to be the full five product thing. I can ask them to pick two of these products that they want. And then I'll have information that is automated that will go to them and, and have that in place. Is it a little bit of work upfront? But if I know I'm sending these five products, it's not that much work. And I can get that knocked out. And Get Oiling is all where this is all housed for me.
Okay. So, um, there's a lot of questions here. So, uh, we, I want to make sure that we are mindful of time. We have two folks who wanted to work together live today, so I want to make sure that we've got space for that. I think the product vault that you're hearing Pam is actually the prospect vault that Janelle is talking about. Janelle, is a prospect vault something that you, uh, and Sarah offer with Simple Grace?
It is. So the prospect vault is hosted on your Get Oiling website, and it is just a place where you can put potential customers into it or have them access it so that they can get in there and start learning. It is available for purchase. You can utilize that. You cannot. I want to make a side note because this is a topic that I know people are asking from start to finish. What does this look like? Get in our Simple Grace Facebook group because I promise you, next week, Sarah and I will go live and I will show you conversations, social media posts, to the DMs, to the follow-up, to the enrollment. So you guys can see all of that. And I know that we don't want to run long here. So I will show you that because I know it's helpful.
Yes. Yeah. I think that that will be incredibly helpful. And just so you know, you guys, just to kind of reiterate here, simplegraceco.com, uh, that is their Get Oiling site where you can see the things that they offer. They use the things that they sell and the things that they sell plug into your Get Oiling system. So you can follow along with the training and go into their Facebook group. It's totally free. Uh, go through this training that Janelle's talking about, that she followed to get these 75 enrollments in their Facebook group. It's free. Can we put, um, could you put the Facebook group link in our chat?
Yes.
So we can make sure everybody can join that. Uh, there's lots of free training in there. There's no cost to join their Facebook group. Um, you can get their, um, get their incredible, uh, conversation flow, the walkthrough, the trainings and everything is totally free in their Facebook group. Um, and then they also have in their Facebook group, lots of links to go and get other freebies. There's tons of freebies, uh, that you guys offer that plug into Get Oiling websites. Uh, and again, everything that you make is something that you use, or you're actually offering it because you used it and it worked, which is, I think, a really, really important thing to note here. Um, and there's, there's a lot of questions about, well, how on earth does it work to sign somebody up with an account without them purchasing? Um, is there a simple, straightforward explanation for that? Or is that something we should, uh, point over to the group for?
Sorry, I was putting links in there. I'm so sorry. You guys, if you think I have it together, I don't always have it together. What did you?
Yeah, yeah. So, um, i- is it, is it a complicated explanation of like how you're actually getting someone to sign up for the Young Living account with your member number now without placing an order? Um, no, okay. So can you just kind of, yeah. So how does that work?
Can I just share my screen? I will show you guys how simple this is.
Oh, here, let me make you a co-host. Hold on. Okay. And yes. Okay. Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So let's say, I have to move this out of the way. Um, let's say that you gave them your referral link that is already in your Young Living site. If you don't know that, it's in there and I can show you where it's at in a second. So you just, I have it set up that you ask them to go to, if I don't share my referral link, if I want to walk them through the step, it is go to youngliving.com, click the sign in up here. And then it pops up where they can log in or they can create an account. And from that point, it, and the, the steps are the same. If you use your referral link, it's going to take them to that youngliving.com. It's just going to pop up your referral link in this spot. Um, and this is all they have to enter. This is it. An email, a name, their phone number, a password, and then your enroller number. So you can either tell them that. But if you shared your referral link, it's going to already be pre-populated in there. And then they click create an account and that's it.
That. Oh my word, you guys. This is so incredibly simple. And look, like Janelle mentioned, we have to remember that with this company, success is a long game. Right? Like this is, there's so many people who have the wrong idea about this whole industry. It is so popular to just pile on with negativity about this whole industry. Um, you have something extraordinary with Young Living in that like, there's, there's no schemey stuff, right? It's, this is really about helping people fall in love with products that change their lives. And if you're successful at that, then you have residual lifetime income because people love these products and they stick around, don't they? How many of you here today, maybe just a quick show of hands, how many of you here today have been with Young Living for more than 15 years? I know people that, that work with me one-on-one who, you know, were out there in the field with Gary, like 26 years ago. And, and, and I'm not talking about a few, I'm talking about a bunch, like people stick around almost eight years since 2014. We've got like, people love these products and they, they stick around. And it's not because you make money. Yes, the money's nice. People don't join Young Living just to make money. Obviously, it's nice to be able to build a business with this. But we have to remember that our real job with all of this is to build relationships that connect people to this stuff. So that they use it, they love it, they can't live without it. And now you've done your job, right? So don't worry about like what could potentially be lost here. Nothing is lost if you've got a customer for life. So what Janelle's doing, that little trick you guys, if you've got somebody who's like, oh, what's that thing you do? It's interesting. Like, hey, let me help you set up a free account. You don't have to buy anything today. Oh my God, please go do that with every person who shows any amount of interest at all whatsoever. That's genius, Janelle.
And then you say to them, and then let's chat about maybe where you would want to get started. You're not giving them the option to say, if you want to get started, let's figure out how you want to get started. Let's tailor this to you. Now, when you're enrolling massive amounts of people, like that can be hard and it can be time consuming. I'm not going to say it's not. And that's why I don't mind enrolling three to five people a month. I don't care. That's fine. That, the way that the last three months has been, has been amazing and awe inspiring. But I'm going to take care of every single one of those customers the way I would if I had one, because every person matters.
That's right. And if you treat your business that way, you will have a business that rewards you for the long haul. All right. So I want to reiterate, you guys, go join the Simple Grace Facebook group. Get this training, Simple Momentum that they did earlier this year. You don't have to do it with, when it's live, go through it. Follow what they're doing because that is the magic. That's literally the stuff that Janelle and Sarah were teaching for Simple Momentum is that it's how Janelle was able to get these 75 new customers, not just re-enrollments. Uh, so, um, and please do, uh, with additional questions for Janelle, head over to their Facebook group. You go to simplegraceco.com if you want to get in touch. Uh, is there anything else you want to add here today? I'm so glad that you were able to come out here with us.
I want to add one side note, and not because I'm looking for any kind of sympathy or empathy, but I want to tell you in October, when this all started for me and really got rolling, um, my dad ended up getting sick. We took care of him for a couple of weeks and then he ended up passing away. And I say that not to be like, oh my gosh, like, why did you keep going? It was right for me to continue what I was doing, but I had systems that were there that I could just grab and put in, and it, and it helped me in that time to continue doing what I was doing. Um, that does not mean that you have to continue going forward in that time. It's okay to rest and it's okay to say, this is not the time for me. But I realized that I have things in place for moments exactly like this. I created systems through Get Oiling so that in moments where life is hard and it's falling apart, that I wouldn't have to stop my business unless I wanted to. If I didn't have to pause, not stop, unless I wanted to. And I say this to encourage you that no matter the chaos that we see in our world, maybe in our families, wherever, you guys can have systems in place to help you. But I also want to say, keep it simple. What I just talked about, I know it was a lot of information and we're trying to give you the full picture. And we're going to break it down in Simple Grace. But simple is where it's at. Have these systems in place so that it can be simple for you and not time consuming.
Absolutely. Amen to that. Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. We're so blessed to have you as part of this community. And I believe that, uh, that Grace concurs. There she is. She's awake. That's so cute. Thank you so much for being here today. And you're welcome to stick around if you want to, you know, answer questions or whatever. You guys can come and find Janelle and Sarah in the Simple Grace group. Yeah, that's right. You got, if you got family there, mine just showed up too. So I, I hear you. It's busy time. We love you and thank you and Merry Christmas. And oh my God, Grace, you're just so distractingly cute. All right. We will talk to you soon, Janelle. All right, Gary, um, I have you on our calendar here today. I'm going to bring you out to chat with us. Uh, and then we will shortly after be getting to Natalie. Oh, Natalia, I'm not sure. Um, okay. Uh, where you can find her on Get Oiling, uh, Good To Be Grateful is at simplegraceco.com. Uh, you can also find them, uh, Janelle and Sarah are both in our Facebook group. That's, uh, facebook.com forward slash groups, forward slash Get Oiling online. Uh, and then of course, you can look for the Simple Grace Collective Facebook group as well. And that's, if you scroll up in the comments, you'll find that. Hi, Gary.
Hello.
Nice to have you here today.
It's great.
Very, very glad to have you. So, um, I saw in, um, in the comments, uh, with, with your registration for our call here today, that you were interested in talking about, uh, moving over to Get Oiling from another platform. Is that right?
Right. So we have our daughter-in-law, who is our upline. She uses Get Oiling and I, I'd been using Essenti.com, which was the old Fuzzbee, or I think there used to be a, a different company that, that was bought out or went away or did whatever. And I'm looking for a way to automate more things, just like Janelle was talking about, is to have things in place. So my problem is getting people plugged in and flagged into a program to where, hey, you're new to this, you want more information, and then plug them into something where they can go and, and do homework on themselves. If they're not willing to do the work to, uh, to, to look at things, then I don't want to spend 80% of my time with 20% of the people, right?
Right.
I want to automate stuff and what I have today doesn't do that, um, very well. Um, there's a capture page where I can get their emails and stuff, but I have to constantly be on the computer and I work a full-time job in technology. And I'm on the computer all day long. So what I don't want to do is finish work at 4:00 PM, uh, Arizona time, because we don't do daily savings time. We have to kind of convert it. And then turn around and spend four or five more hours on a computer, doing Facebook and doing other stuff. So I want to be able to automate, spend some time with the grandkids, things of that nature. And my wife is very anti-social media. She doesn't want to share a whole lot of stuff, but if there's things that we can put together that says, okay, when you talk to this person, go over and click this and do, uh, like Janelle's saying, an onboarding campaign. Well, what is that? What does it look like? When you say automate, there's all kinds of things people think that's automated. And, uh, she's so cute. What's her name?
That's, that's Grace.
He's so cute. That, we want to be able to keep it simple. From Janelle's point, keep it simple as well. So she can say, if you have a person that, um, is interested in learning more, like she's meeting, uh, one-on-one with a person today for breakfast. Uh, she likes the, 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 the one-on-one type of thing. Social media is not something she likes to do. But you're not going to grow very fast doing the one-by-one now, especially with all this virus thing that's going on. And, and she works for an airline, so she meets a lot of people. You know, there's 175 people per, per plane ride.
Right, right.
Kick them all off or kick most of them off and bring them back on. But, you know, that's, uh, she's, has a flight attendant niche that I want her to tap into. Um, and it doesn't have to be with her company. But social media is the only way you can do that because she can't talk to somebody that is with United or Delta or something else. She's with a completely different company. So unless it's a group type of thing, a flight attendants group, things like that will make it easier for her to do. And, um, Cassie Rathbun is the person that, um, is my, um, upline. She's our daughter-in-law. Uh, she's the one that says, go, go to Get Oiling. Your stuff, they'll make it much more simple. Uh, but I've got to kind of build, rebuild it by scratch, right?
Got you. Yeah. So, um, so there's, um, not, I don't want to overwhelm, but I want to give you a couple of ideas. Number one, with the automation that you're looking for, uh, we have a really simple, um, straightforward. You can do it in an afternoon and have it done. Um, uh, it's a funnel training course. And that is at getoiling.com/getleads. Putting that in our, our chat right now. Um, that's a little mini course, uh, that I created earlier this year. It's a refresh of a previous one where you can actually have a landing page that says, you know, here, do you want, um, like what Janelle's talking about? You know, you want to get my guide on why you shouldn't be using scented candles or something like that. You can create something like that and then have that automated campaign that drips and follows up with them. That's for your prospects. Now, there is also, and so you know, uh, and maybe for anyone else who doesn't know, Get Oiling, uh, has a sort of clone platform, uh, that is, uh, for not Young Living brand partners. And for, you know, just for people with all kinds of businesses and it's called Attract Well. Um, at 2:00 PM Eastern Time, we are live there on Thursdays as well. And today I'm going to be training on creating a discovery call funnel. And basically what that is, is a way for you to position, uh, a consultative call with you. So this could be Zoom or phone, uh, or in person, as your wife might like to meet. Um, where people can more or less apply, like they need to pre-qualify. So instead of just saying, um, you know, oh, maybe we'll have coffee. It's, um, I would like your help with X problem. Here's what I've been trying. Here's what I've invested. Here's my scale of one to 10 readiness. Questions like that, that help you when you go into that meeting, uh, have what you need to be able to, you know, sort of seal the deal. And I wanted to show you an example of what that can look like on a site. Um, and I am going to be training on how this is done on our 2:00 PM call today. And you're welcome to join that or watch the replay, get on the list. Uh, that's at attractwell.com. Uh, this is Jackie McLaughlin. She's, um, she's a member of our community. Uh, she's actually, she uses Simple Grace's, uh, Simple Starts to Natural Living. This, this came from Janelle and Sarah. Um, and she offers free stuff here on her website. Now, if somebody wanted to work with her, they could apply for a wellness consult. So this is where you could say, you know, hey, if you're ready to actually talk, make serious moves, uh, then you're going to want to come over here, go to my website and click on, you know, under, well, work with me, click on wellness consult. Then they're going to fill out all this information about themselves, what they're trying to get figured out. You know, the contributing factors to their, their, their issues and whatever questions you want to ask, because this is custom. Uh, and then, um, and then after they, uh, finish here, they then go to another page where they can book themselves on your calendar. So you set your availability. They pick a slot that's available that you've set. Uh, and the whole process is automated. So if somebody goes, And the whole process is automated. So if somebody goes and, and books this right here, the next page, they secure their appointment. Jackie's going to get a notification, hey, so-and-so signed up. They're scheduled for X date and time. And then all you have to do is just hop on the phone or Zoom or, you know, show up in person or wherever that is at that scheduled date and time. So that's sort of the ultimate automation when we're talking about really kind of zooming in and working with people who are the most ready right now. And in terms of, of being off of social, so long as you have a way to capture the contact information of the people that you're meeting when you're out belly-to-belly in the world, then you know, then you're good. And for all of these things that we, you know, that we offer, that I showed you there, we've got the training. It's all inside of the Good Oiling system and the training is all free on YouTube. And then of course, we've got little mini courses as well that are free for you to use as a Good Oiling member to, to learn how to set those things up. And we do have VA services as well. Like if there's something, you're just like, I don't have time and I want to deal with this. Then our team can help create some of those things for you as well.
Well, I think that's kind of, is kind of a hybrid of that. I have ideas of what a landing page would look like, but I don't know all the, the ins and outs of what Get Oiling has available. So you know, definitely would want to book appointments, but you know, how, how what, how does that integrate with your calendar, right? So just like Outlook. And you know, you have time, you're not available, whatever, and they go pick a time. But at the same point, you want to be able to, to not only educate them, but book some time so they can discuss whatever. Right? I think that's, that's where you get in front of them with either a FaceTime or Zoom call, most of the time is just face-to-face, because you don't know who you are really, right?
Yeah, that's right. That's right. We do have some supplemental training and it's actually, it's on our Attract Well platform. And that is is a little bit more complicated, attractwell.com/cfc, I think. Julie, is that right? I don't know if I know. Hold on, let me test it real quick. I believe this is, yes, it is, attractwell.com/cfc. And that, I actually walked through a whole funnel that includes getting people onto a call with you. The booking page, there's templates, all of that is in. There's a lot of stuff that's pre-built that you can simply follow the training, modify it, make it look the way that you want to. And just have it pop right into your system.
So what plan is that on, Ashley? Because I know you've got basic plan, then you've got the, the, the basic plus some other stuff. And then you've got the, the, I want to say the Cadillac, because Cadillac's not the good one anymore, the Ferrari one.
Right. So, so for what I just showed you, like on Jackie's website, for instance, or for like utilizing all of the features in the client funnel challenge, I recommend premium. Because that's going to give you, your, your branding is already unlocked. You've got lots of pages, you've got vaults, you've got everything that you need. Basic with a branding package could also work. But those are, that, that's really going to kind of be up to you and sort of the size of your business, your budget and that kind of thing. So I would
It's a conversion, so it would be not active, because our, our tagline is Jump Seat Oil. So we've got a logo and we've got, you know, Jump Seat Oil is, is attributed to the, the airline type thing. So when somebody sees that, they kind of know, oh, okay. This cute little bottle with a drop in the middle and an airplane in the middle of the bottle. So it's, it's all ready to go. So I want to use that and it's going to take time to build something where the automation is ready. And then when we're ready, it's like, okay, now switch, right?
Right. Yeah. So, so feel free, be in touch with us. Our support is super responsive. You know, what I would do is this. Look for where your business needs the most support right now, right? So is that in the organization on the backend, getting the contact manager and your emailing set up? Then I would focus on that first. And that's usually what I recommend for anybody getting started with us, because you're in a people business, is to focus on making sure that your people that you have in your business are supported first. So you know how to use the contact manager, send emails, set up the campaigns and all that kind of stuff, or personalize the campaigns we have pre-written. And then from there, you know, do you need, you know, is your time such that you need a way for people to book themselves with you? If, if yes, then use the training in that client funnel challenge there to set up a booking funnel. Or, you know, come learn more about it on, on our Call It 2 o'clock today. I'm still going to be pointing over to that client funnel challenge course, though, by the way, it's where it's got all the meat and potatoes of, of that walkthrough. But, but yeah, and then from there, you know, if you guys are actively like out in the world and you need to be able to really be sharing your site, then, then you would create your homepage. And that's actually something that can be done really quickly. Again, and this would be either on our Get Oiling or our Trackball channel, we both have, if you look for homepage. If you search our, our YouTube channel for homepage, you'll see a number of different trainings, many of which actually have done for you templates that you can just download and swap out images, change colors, add your own logo and kind of call it a day. So oh, oh, and one more thing with, if you're getting started with us through, I believe it's the 4th of January. I don't remember specifically, we've extended what was originally our Black Friday specials. There's lots of other things that come along with your, with getting started with us this time of year. So there's, you can learn all about it on justatgetoiling.com. It's, it's there on the page.
Okay. Do you support, because I know I, I do blogs, but I don't do a daily blog, right? It's a monthly and it's more about specific topics or subjects. Like one of my subject was how to pee better.
You know, alright. That's catchy.
Yes, catchy. And it's, it's all young loving. So it's not, you know, anything else, but it's what, what things can happen in what products and stuff can you use? So it'd be a monthly blog, a monthly newsletter, which I generate now through the Essenti is very similar. It's not as pretty as yours, but it's, it has, it's all set up that way. So a lot of it again is the automation piece where once you get somebody's name and telephone number or name, email, telephone number, then you can funnel them into something that kicks off automatically, right? You get your welcome email or get to know me better or whatever happens to be. Then once they go to another advanced stage, how do you know they've actually looked at that? Because sometimes you don't know if, if you give, hey, would, would you be willing to look at this, whatever, within the next two weeks and I'll follow up in two weeks? And if they haven't done it, then you can't move them on to the next phase.
Right. So, yeah, yeah. So we, we talk a fair amount about automation and sort of the limits of it on, on these sessions, especially as it pertains to a network marketing business. Automations are things that really should be supporting the underlying, you know, sort of follow-up sequence and you actually reaching out to people directly. However, one of the things that you're able to do with your automation, and this kind of supports what Janelle was talking about earlier today, is that, you know, there's, there's people who are getting those emails and they're not responding. But that doesn't mean that they aren't reading and they aren't getting more curious and, you know, starting to pay closer attention. So I liken it to stove top popcorn. If you ever use one of those Whirly Pops where you, you know, you've got the heat in there, you've got the popcorn kernels in there, you have to keep stirring it. And some of the kernels pop before others, some of them never pop at all, but you just got to keep stirring the pot. And, and so stirring the pot and keeping the heat on, what that can look like, like for Janelle, is making these posts on social that, that keep people curious. But if you're using more automation and email marketing, then if somebody signs up for an email, or sorry, they, they get an email campaign because they signed up for a freebie, right? Like that, you know, Simple Start to Natural Living that Simple Grace Co. offers. Then after they've received that, the sequence of emails, if you're releasing a blog post once a week that would be interested in, that would be interesting to people who signed up for that thing, then once a week, they're going to keep hearing from you. And then maybe you'll invite them to a call with you. And because they've been reading what you write and they like what you have to say, they didn't know you before, but maybe they want to take you up on that. And these were people who were maybe strangers or you met in passing or at a trade show or at an airport or wherever. But they've become familiar with you because you have engaged in that consistent activity. So that ongoing engagement is something that that, that ongoing engagement is something that will continue to support the conversion of people, but you still need to be going in and making sure that you're, you're reaching out to leads on a one-on-one basis. And in our system, you can see, if you sent an email, did they open it? Did they click a link in it? That is something that you can see in, in your Good Oiling system.
Yeah, this is very similar to Outlook where you can send an email and did they read it, right? Did they click to open it up?
That's right. That's right. Good Oiling does show that.
Yeah. And that'd be, let's see, I'm trying to think of anything else. What's a normal? Probably not a good question asked, but setting up the automation is that it takes like a month, two months. I know you've got templates, but you have to really sit down and storyboard what you want them to do. Or what you want your website to go from.
Yeah. So it, it really, really depends on, on you and, and how you want to run your business. So that's kind of the thing about our platform and why we have content partners like, like Simple Grace that Janelle is a part of, or like Real Workspace. You can choose to make this your own completely. Or you can choose to plug in stuff that's already done. You could also choose the in-between, which is to take templates that we've created for you and modify those to your liking and then getting on calls like we're on today, where we can sit down and talk about what you're working on and how you want to optimize it. So you know, there's folks, some, some folks will take a year before they have everything done, because they really wanted to take their time or their particular. But some folks will just plug in a couple of things and be off to the races. You know, after a couple of afternoons, maybe a week after they've gotten started. It really depends. Again, I would recommend starting with making sure you've got your contacts handled so that you know how to send emails and take care of the people that you've already got. And, and using your contact manager like as a CRM, so that you can be doing the work of growing your, your people-driven business. And then start adding the things that support you, right? So the email automation campaign, the onboarding campaign for your new people, for instance. That's right. Brick by brick.
Or as they say in the, in the developmental word, add releases.
There you go. There you go.
Add a piece to it. Okay.
A little bit at a time. Well, and you are welcome to, to book a call just like this or a session on this call, just like you did today, once you get things started. And you're putting things to, into work and you want some feedback, you want eyes on what you're doing, you want some strategy. You could always come back on to a call like this and we can help you navigate getting that done.
Cool. Very good.
Awesome. Thank you for being with us, Gary, and we're excited to have you with us.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks for all the info.
Absolutely.
And I got to wring it out of my head now.
There will be a replay. We'll send it out.
Okay.
All right. Take care.
All right. Bye-bye.
Bye. All right, Natasha, I believe this is you. You introduced yourself as Natalie. I wanted to make sure this is, you signed up for a call today, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Hello, hello, I see Angela. So I cannot see me. It is okay, yeah?
That's okay. If you, if you want to turn on video, you can, but it's
Okay, but you can hear me. That's good. Yeah. Yeah, thank you very much. I'm very excited. I'm a little lost with all these computer stuff. So I prefer general to speak with people one-to-one and it was very well working with me. I started last year exactly in that time in December, but I was living in Macau. This is by the Hong Kong. So it's a yeah, it's a different lifestyle. Yeah, it was the old people know each others and I like to speak with people and I know a lot of people. So it was like easygoing. I was like starting December, I enroll myself and from one, next month, I started all this five, eight or general five people a month I was enrolling. And I was top, the first three quarter, I was the top of Macau and Hong Kong. So, and then I moved to Vienna. So, um, yeah, I'm, I'm getting divorced. I'm mom of two. It's a lot going on. And yeah, now I'm alone in Vienna with my two monkeys and for kids are so to settle. They know once we coming back, but for me, I'm Russian. Was living nine years in Macau, now back to my home country that I was choosing. And here, here's completely different. Even the people they taking, they like it, but they not going to, to enroll even. It's completely different here in Europe. You can enroll. That's what the lady was telling. Yeah. You can make account without purchase anything. In Macau, you, to be, to be a member, you need to buy a starter kit. That was, was like, okay, the premium starter kit to buy with essential rewards. Here, you don't need to buy nothing. I already started. Also, I say, look, I do just an empty account. Once you want to buy just a lipstick, it's your account, you can do it. It doesn't work. I don't know somehow. And plus this with the COVID, with the quarantine and core. And I, I have my friends here, I was study here, I met my husband, ex-husband here. But it's so different somehow for me now, I understand that I have a very strong support from Macau and Hong Kong. They supporting me, they like me. And but now I'm here alone. I found one that's, that's looking also so excited. And we trying to organize some workshop that I also already doing in Macau and was very successful in that. But somehow the people didn't want to come. I, I'm, I'm, and now I was like, okay. It doesn't work the way that it was working in China. So I need to go on social and I do not like it. I don't know. And, and okay, first of all, I, I was planning to, to expand to Russian market and I try with my brother there. Probably I need to be there. So here is a German language. It's like, I, I don't find myself now. I'm like a Russian, but now in Austria. And my account still hanging in, in Macau. I need to purchase my hundred P V D on my upload, uh, uh, the upline. Because I didn't have still documents with the COVID. It's, it's like, I'm hanging somewhere and I don't know. Okay. I say, okay, I need to go through the social media and I started for a few months, my Instagram account. I still didn't want to give too much of myself, but it's looked like I need some stuff to, to share. And now I understand that the people they say also do not share too much of the products, more of your style. So that's why for me, I think I go about a healthy lifestyle and sport, because I'm like active and crazy, doing a lot of funny stuff that not everybody doing. And yeah, and then I using my products. But I don't, I don't really understand so really this system, how, how I need to go. I spent a lot of time to do some posts or to answer to members that are in Macau. I have sixty, sixty people now. Some drop, some, some still on ER. But it's now I'm holding only an executive. I was thinking I'm so fast going to silver, but no. So now I don't, I, I, I trying to, to understand with this system with Get Oiling. Because one lady was using this in Macau. And she's long over gold. Yeah. And my upline just turned because of me to silver and I want to be there at least, but gold, I want to be gold. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So having a system like ours, especially given the fact that we are, we do have globally compliant themes for the built-in websites and campaigns and everything is, if someone in your circumstance who is kind of popping around the world, it's, it's pretty ideal. Because you, you're always going to have a way to bring in information and you're always going to have a way to keep in touch with And you're always going to have a way to keep in touch with your people. So number one, in terms of using our system and how I recommend that that you make sense of of using us in in your circumstances. Is number one, just like I mentioned to Gary, uh make sure that you are taking care of your people that you already have. Uh, with leverage, right, with automation. So having uh, you know, the onboarding campaigns. Uh, but also, you know, if you wanted to create. Some kind of a resource uh for your people. Uh, we have a great course on that, the uh move your groups course. Uh, that's something, you know, that that you could actually put together as a resource for your people, or you could just simply just send out an email once a week. Like a little love letter to your customers, uh just to let them know what's new in your world. Uh, what you love about the products you're using and asking them to respond or, you know, put them into a Facebook group or a vault on getaway link. Or just have a way that you are keeping in touch and loving on the people that you already have, number one. And then make sure that you're using your contact manager to uh be following up with your personals. Uh, and with anyone in your organization that you have that connection with, so your care calls. Uh, so keep notes on your contacts so you always know what's coming up and what you need to do, uh so that your business as it exists is supported. From there, given your circumstances and given what sounds like a very beautiful and interesting life that you live. And and that you're interested in having and creating, um I would really focus on inspiring people, uh inspiring moms. Uh, i- in particular, I was in a, well, I wasn't in a moving countries circumstance. Like you've certainly done when I got started in this in this industry. Uh, but I was a newly single mom of a two-year-old. And uh it was difficult. It was a very difficult time and I was vulnerable and made myself vulnerable in hopes that it gave other people hope. And that went a really long way to making new friends. Uh, and attracting a big following and a lot of those people wound up signing up with me and joining me and working with me. And so that was a lot of my leads just came from people who liked what I had to say on social. Uh, they they liked the the joy and the fun that I was able to add into their life when they're scrolling their feet every day, basic social media stuff, right? Uh, and it sounds like that's something that you're already doing. So um I would encourage you to keep doing that. And then as maybe the world opens up, I don't know how things are in Austria right now. Um, but moms love to get together with other moms who have kids the same age.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Yeah, so um as it becomes safer to do that. Uh, I would definitely, definitely see about creating in-person opportunities so that you can get to know and make new friends. Uh, in your new country. Uh, obviously it'd be good for your kids too, uh but uh but most importantly, it starts to build a social network for you. Uh, that's not just virtual. And of course, everyone can combine into the virtual world if you're using your contact manager and connecting on social. Uh, but I would, I would really just go one little piece at a time, starting with supporting your existing business. Uh, and then maybe add on something like what Simple Grace has, you know, simple start to natural living. So if you're on Instagram and you're talking about. You know, hey, I, you know, I I grew up with natural stuff and it's still my lifestyle now. I'm always so surprised that people don't understand how this stuff works. I've got a guide. Click the link in the bio and and go check it out and.
So that's what I I doesn't understand, uh, how does it work?
Sure.
So it is, it is an Instagram when I I I do some post, yeah? And then I say, I have some info, click it here and it will connect to to the ghetto link. To the page what I will do, yeah? So that is, what is the name? Because for me, like, um, also my kids, they like, uh, my sons four languages, the daughter six languages, we speak home free languages. So I always jumping German, Russian, English. So sometimes I'm just cannot keep with one language. And I was, uh, and especially if I started, uh, with people speaking Russian and you looking that. Uh, in computer, some 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 terms are completely different, yeah? And now I was looking, um, uh, get oiling, the funnels. Uh, okay, leads, I know what is the lead and the landing pages, you know, like a uh a many new terms. And I'm I I always was like going away from computer. I like a like private parties, people to get together. And I always was doing a lot of parties. The people love to come. Uh, I just, uh, um. Second month that I was doing, uh, that after I sign young living, I already did at home. Uh, my first workshop and my upline that was doing young living second year. She was like, I never did it. I like just it for me and she never thought it's like business and now she's a silver. She's so thankful. Um, yeah, anyway, I I love to to organize and keep the people together, but. But not social. I love it my home.
Right, right.
So and now I see I need to change the way. So if I change the way, what is this? All the funnel or all this link, if I make a post. Then uh I need the people that's the click and then then open it, but then I I want, that's why I'm jumping. I'm jumping between three languages. I open one page and then I do the post in English, then I do it post in Russian. So it's like, I think I wanted to do two accounts, but I don't want really, okay, they can click and translate it if they want, yeah? So, um, yeah, but so if I do, if I do the post in Russian. And then I need then pu- put uh do some a page in ghetto link in Russian language. I can copy something, yeah? I don't know how this work now, but the idea then they they click them and they land in in the ghetto link this page. And then they actually then how they used in Russia or Ukraine. They 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 can, they can choose them with the language, yeah? But the problem is also it my my uh uh referral number as a membership number was going away. Or it was not going through. I tried a few times. To 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 get the order. If I sent and I say, oh, you want to order this, okay, go on that link. And then choose the country and then if they go from ghetto link. Choose the Russia, choose the product and then it doesn't show my 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 referral number as my member number. And I was like, ah, um, yeah, I don't know why, yeah, some.
So, um, in terms of applying your member number to these different themes. That should work regardless of the market that you're in. So if you feel like you're having issues with your member number applying to. Your different themes for different markets, definitely send a message to support just so we can make sure that there's nothing wonky going on on the backend. Just just to make sure that that's working. But but uh in terms of of having content and getting leads. Uh, from uh from different languages, we have a number of of folks who have. Two or three languages on their good oiling site and they organize it in different ways. Uh, sometimes there will be, you know, language number one homepage, language number two homepage. Or maybe the homepage has, you know, a message in two languages and says, click here for language one, click here for language two. Uh, and then you could go into that, um. And then you can go go into, you know, whatever details you want to share on those respective links. Um, I, you know, in terms of 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 moving back and forth between languages, I think it's going to kind of depend. On you and on on the audience that you really want to be reaching and speaking to. Um, I would really just get on social and see who's engaging with what. Who of your audience right now uh is most engaged? Is it, you know, is is it Russian speaking? Is it English speaking? Uh, and then I would just for now go with the one or two that are really the most engaged with you. Because those are the people who are paying attention. Those are your potential leads. And then what I would recommend that you do, and this is how you tie this together. I've put this in the chat here. If you want to go check this out. What I want you to do is create a simple funnel and you can do that at getoilink.com forward slash get leads. This is where you're going to say, I have a free shopping list or I have a free something. Uh, that's, you know, something that's helpful to someone. Uh, that if they if they got that from you, you know there's somebody that you should have a conversation with about young living. So um I talk about exactly how to do that. It's a course fully just, it it's it's actually pre-made with Canva templates. Uh, and so all you have to do is just swap out the words uh for your own. Uh, so make that. And then once you have that made, the landing page for it. Whatever page you're using that they put their name and email in, you're going to take that and you're going to link it in your link in bio. Right? So, um, and that's like just in your bio of Instagram, you have whatever about you and then you have a link. And that's the page. So you're going to create a link page. That's the second comment I've put here in our chat. Um, you can create a link page with your good oiling account. We have a pre-made template that's already done for you, but in that training, uh, I actually have, if you check the description. I have a really pretty one that has custom Canva buttons that you can go and modify and make your own. So make yourself a a giveaway. Create a link page, put it in your bio. And then as you're making those posts. You, you know, you do whatever the beautiful thing is, the cool thing is that you're doing, and then you say. I made a thing, here's what it does, link in bio, click the link in bio. And then people can go click it and then they can get into that funnel. They get the download, they get the emails and then you could be reaching out to them.
So, and uh, exact about that, I can, I can uh look on this uh link YouTube, watch this one, yeah?
Yes, that's the link in bio training, but the one above is get leads. That's the little course on.
Okay, great, yeah. Okay, um, yeah, I just opened uh many of them and I was like, oh my God, I need to sit down. Because it's a new terms and different languages and I was like, okay, I need to take time. Um, yes, yes, yeah.
But if you do these, if you do these two things, just these two things, and you keep going with your posting on Instagram. Then you're going to start eventually getting leads from Instagram into your good oiling account. And now you've got new people to talk to.
Okay, okay, um. Another idea that I had, um, because was thinking, okay, the Russian market is quite new. It's open in December two thousand nineteen. Um, I started with my mom and friends. Okay, it's taking maybe time. For some people, it's a two or four years, some jumping faster, yeah? But the general, uh, my mom like idea, oh, we do not have money for that. I see. You just need a few drops of that, you know, like it's taking so much time to understand the people. How does it work? But I'm not there and and they're not really. Yeah, they are interested, but they're not interesting to spend money. They like to get this stuff, yeah? So that's why.
The 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 money objection, uh, when people are sensitive to the price of something. Usually they're only sensitive to it because they don't yet understand what using that product could really do for them. If they really understand what the product can do for them, then it's worth every penny and it's probably worth double whatever it costs. Because the benefit that they get from using it is something that's very real to them. So what I would encourage you to do if you're running into that objection is to not, like Janelle was talking about earlier. Is to not go straight into here is a product, purchase a product. Uh, or sending a link or something like that, but to say, have you heard of this thing? This is something that I think that could be helpful for you. And then go and 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 you say, I can send you some of my notes on it. So you can learn a little bit more about it. Would you like to hear more about it? They say yes. And then like Janelle was mentioning, you know, you go over to the Free Life Steps app and you grab that little blurb of information about lavender or about. Uh, you know. I don't know, like one of the digestive enzymes that Young Living offers or something like that, right? Like essential enzyme. Uh, and and you and you send that to them. Maybe you grab a testimonial from someone and you send that to them as well. Uh, and then and then you ask them, you know, like. It does that sound interesting to you? Do you have any other questions? Because if you've already had a conversation with them that has revealed that they've got a problem, that's uh that's, you know, really worth solving. They need to have a problem that's expensive enough, right? And and by expensive, I don't necessarily mean dollar amount, but like it's. It's going to cost them something, uh, you know, financially, emotionally, uh, in some way, uh, if they don't solve it. So once they've revealed to you that that's the problem, uh, then you say, you know, if if I had something that might help, would you want to check it out? They say, yes, say, okay, I've got some information I could share. You want me to send it, email, text, okay, send it. And then then you say, are you interested in trying this out? They say, yes, great. They say, no, okay. You just, you keep dripping. You you keep showing up. They're eventually going to uh realize that the thing that they are choosing to see. As the hurdle between them and the product, uh, really isn't the main issue, right? It's really about their readiness. Um, you know, people, people come up with the funds when something is important enough. You know, if I told you, if I if I asked you what your dream car was. Uh, and provided you're into cars or, you know, driving is something that that, I don't know, if you're living in Vienna, maybe maybe cars aren't really such a thing. It wasn't when I was in New York City, but uh but if I, you know, if I told you that, like, you know, I could give you exactly the car that you want, the car of your dreams specked out perfectly. But I need you to come up with five hundred dollars today. You'd find a way to go for you. You'd go make five hundred dollars, right? So that's, that's kind of the mindset, right? Like, we want to be able to to understand first, what is it that they really want? Because if I can't describe that cart perfectly to you, you're not going to go raise twenty-five dollars. You're like, yeah, okay, whatever. I really want a car that's like that. They weren't listening to me.
Yeah.
Right? So that's that, that's what I would recommend is that you keep living your awesome life on Instagram and making new friends. Uh, really try to get as many people into the direct messages and just get to know them. You know, ask them, hey, are you a parent too, right? And open up about some of the things that you're dealing with. You know, to the extent that you feel comfortable doing it. Uh, that's, that's going to really. It's going to really help people to connect with you emotionally before you ever have the opportunity. Uh, to, you know, to to speak with them directly. And once you do, there is an instant connection. And you'll find that the the more connected you are, uh, you know, they are to you and you are from listening to them. Uh, the fewer of those objections you ever really have to deal with.
Um, last question.
Okay.
Um. I I'm trying to get, um, we we have here in Austria, so in all the M T Rs, um, one. Uh, so, um, adware advertising, so on magazines. So I I'm probably going to get a a quote of the page. So, and I cannot wear. Young leaving some products and. So, and for me, it was very interesting. Uh, the first of all, what I'm going to introduce. And second, they will get a a in B O A link to buy a product. So the problem is if I I give, um, uh, get oiling. Um. If my, uh, so this is a general page, yeah? They need to go to choose the country, yeah? Uh, and I I a few times, I I don't know, a few times it's worked well. And then few times it is without my member number. Okay, it's it's going closer. But generally, I I will write just, uh. You can purcha- purchase through. Through, uh. Uh, you can purchase through the, um. Uh, independent, um. Uh, distributor, yeah? Or because I I if I just write, uh, young cleaning dot com and they will buy some products. I will not get nothing from that, yeah? So I I be, I be, I will, I will write, okay, this is the young cleaning this, this and this. And you can get the products through a independent distributor and this the link probably.
Yeah, yeah.
How does it look?
So I I recommend always, 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 um, you don't give them a link uh to anything that has to do with Young Living. Until you've had a private conversation with them. Um, that's going to help you ensure that that person is actually following the right steps, getting your member number uh in into the process. Uh, and of course, you can always, from your good oiling website, um, from your dashboard. There's a, there's a share my site button that's in the top right. It's always there. When you click that, one of those options to share, of course, is your Young Living site or your good oiling site. But then there's also just my Young Living signup link. Uh, and actually, if you go to your good oiling address dot com forward slash start, that'll also take them straight to Young Living as well. Uh, to getting started in living.
Yeah, but we need to choose the country because if you're going on on Austria, we get the German language. If I go to Russia, we get Russian language. And the many people, if they, if I send them get oiling is in English. Many people speak only one language and they're like, oh, what to do?
So this, this would, it it doesn't go to, this doesn't go to your uh or show up your good oiling site. This actually, so if you go to. Um, what is here? Let me find your your website here real quick. Uh, yes, well Natalia. Okay, so if we go to wellnatalia dot com forward slash start. That takes you to, or at least it should. Let me see. Yeah, it it takes you straight to Young Living.
Yeah, and then if you choose the country, yeah, you you, um, if you're on the young living page, if you choose the country that's coming the the page. With all countries, you can immediately see for you. If I'm on the gate or link and choosing, for example, um, other countries. And it show me that it's download, but it show the same. I need to roll down. I need to go down. Are you ready, huh?
Yeah, so if you go to your website dot com forward slash start, it goes straight here. Uh, and of course, outside of the U S, uh, this is still how you're enrolling. So the it just, it goes straight here. Um, so if you're having issues when you're sharing your Young Living site with it carrying. Um so if you're having issues when you're sharing your Young Living site with it carrying your member number, that may be something that you need to bring to uh Young Living's tech support, uh if that's not carrying over when they change uh countries.
So.
But another thing that you could do, if you wanted to make this even more automated for yourself, is if you get that link in bio, like I mentioned, uh you could have in Russian language, you know, buy the kit in Russian, buy the kit in German, buy the kit in English and have those links specific to those markets right there, so that people can click and go straight to the correct place, that's also an option.
Yeah, yeah, that's I was trying, yeah. So I have in background some some music already, just a second. Oh my god, I don't know where is it coming from? Okay, I get it. Um yeah, and um if I got this advert pla- place um in this, in this um magazine, mostly actually a man who was looking at that magazine. It's a fix fifty-six percent a man and around fifty percent of the woman. And uh it is uh beauty was quite high, sport and healthy products, yeah? And I was um so I need um quickly speak about the company or what we are in producing. And each market is a little different and I think this Europe, they are very uh strong um meaningful about sustainability, about about the saving the the water and everything. And I was thinking maybe maybe to 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 show them uh start the kit of the thieves or just go on the on the bloom set. I I I I just need to to choose one product that's maybe I can attract men and a woman.
So the product, that that if if you're going to, if you're going to be showing up anywhere on social, in a magazine, on television, email, wherever, the product is you. You're the product, you're the reason why they're going to be open or interested in Young Living. So what I would recommend is that whatever you create for that freebie, that giveaway, talk about that. Or talk about a consult with you, right? So that people who are interested in this thing that you have to say can come learn more. And it's after those those people who are interested enough, who come say, yes, I want to learn more, then they get to learn about Young Living. So I wouldn't, um because people can Google Young Living and they can go sign up for an account through corporate and they'll never be your customer. Don't have, don't have the way people get uh introduced to Young Living be through a way that is not a relationship with you because you're not going to be able to keep that um, you know, that's, that's not going to grow your business and it's not going to give your person uh the best outcome, right? Because they they should have your support. So um so when you get featured in this magazine, talk about your daily routine and have that daily routine be the giveaway that you have on your website. And send people to opt in for that and then everybody who opts in is going to get some emails. Uh and then, you know, maybe that it's, you know, which language do you prefer? And then maybe you've got an automation that starts them on campaigns for one of those languages. Uh and then, and then, of course, you say, I would like to introduce you to some of the products that I use that are integral to my, uh you know, my my routine. Uh let's set up a call and I can make sure that you've got the right ones for yours, that kind of thing. Um so I I would not uh, you know, feature a Young Living product in a magazine, that's that's Young Living Corporate's job. Um your job is to let people know who you are, how your life has changed and how you can help them change theirs, does that make sense?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Awesome, I am excited for you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
And you've got those, you've got those two links, right? Get your funnel set up and then get that link page and then you could be offering those things uh everywhere you get featured.
Okay, thank you so much.
Of course, thank you for being here, alright, see you next time. Alright, you guys, thank you all for sticking around, everyone who's still here, you guys are rock stars. We will be back next week, Greg will be back as well. Uh we'll be talking some more about that new app, who is excited about the app, oh my gosh, we're so excited about the app. Uh we're going to get into uh push notifications and all kinds of fun stuff, so hope you'll join us. Uh till then, I hope you have an amazing, amazing holiday and uh we will see you in a week.
Bye.
Bye, guys.